Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, March 26, 2014. It is 7:03 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Joseph Otidy, Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. Okay. We don't have anybody specific to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
No.
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to ask Mr. Valenti to do it, since he's...
Lead the pledge of allegiance.
Lead the pledge of allegiance.
I don't know where the kids were.
That's right.
We all stand? Like the old days, please face the flag, and hand up your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Valenti. So accustomed to having children to do that. Okay, could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our first item, public hearing on the five-year deferred maintenance plan. Is there anything to say about it, or simply that the public hearing is open?
Yeah. We open the public hearing and take any speakers who'd like to speak to it?
Yes, okay, so we have opened that public hearing at 7:04 PM.
I have received no speaker cards. Okay, in that case, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:05 PM. Okay, communications, administrator comments. Who would like to begin?
I can start.
Okay.
Last night was the district spelling bee, and we had a great turnout, and have a winner, and they'll be presented to the board on April 23rd.
Great.
Pass.
Okay.
I had the pleasure of attending the honorary service award tea by the Jefferson PTA Council, and I want to thank Marie and all the other board members from the council, because it's really nice to see all the people being recognized for all the volunteer service that they've done, and people going back. I believe it was 1970s some of the awards were given, or maybe sooner than, earlier than that, so...
Fifty-nine, yeah. Wow. Okay. I do have a card for a person to address the board, Ms. Melinda Dart.
Yes. Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I wanted to thank everyone, because I was not able to attend the last board meeting, I wanted to thank everyone for their participation in the March 8 event at Woodrow Wilson, which was a wonderful turnout, and it was great to see all the community there at that event. And I wanted to announce that there are two upcoming family workshops at night coming up. One is at TRP this Thursday night, being given by the two PE teachers on healthy food choices on a budget. And then on April 30th at Tobias, there's a workshop being given by Ron Johnson jointly with PTA leader Rosie Tejada on the Common Core standards for parents at Tobias on April 30th, at 6:00 PM, I think, is when dinner starts. So, just wanted everyone to know about those events, and thank everyone again for their March 8 assistance and help. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dart. Do we have correspondence or comments from the superintendent?
Do you want to do board member acknowledgements and commendations?
There it is. I'm gonna have to start wearing the glasses, aren't I? I always believe that we come after all the rest of you. So, board member comments. Would you like to begin, or are you, are you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Yes, I, we were at the honorary service award tea, and it was really a nice event with lots of people from the past coming back, and some of the ones that recently got it. So, I just wanted to put a thank you out to all of the people that helped with that event as well. And I did miss the spelling bee, but I, we're in the process of putting together a memorial service for my cousin, and that last night was the night that we, family members got together, so unfortunately I wasn't there. But I know it was great. I look forward to meeting those that did well in the spelling bee. And other than that, I don't think I have much else to say.
I just wanted to acknowledge, Mr. Valenti is here, and I did go on a visit with Mr. Vidalas to TR Polisita Middle School, and we also went to JFK School. And I just want to acknowledge and commend all the staff and principals of both schools. Mr. Vidalas and I were both happy to go into classrooms and see students that were engaged, and they all looked happy. And I remember making the comment to Mr. Valenti that it seemed real peaceful and calm at TRP, and that was a nice feeling. So, that's it.
I'm really going to apologize for being a little bit scatterbrained. I've got a cold, and my brain isn't working at full speed, so I will try to keep track of where we are on the agenda, but feel free to nudge me if I'm losing it. Okay. That brings us to general functions and the...
Now is the time for the superintendent's comments and correspondence.
I just didn't really want to let you speak.
So actually, I do have a couple of things to share. So, just wanted to make an announcement for the public at large. There will be a reminder voicemail going out to families about this, but there's a last chance health insurance coverage fair this Saturday at Ceramonti Mall. It's a last opportunity to sign up before the Monday deadline, and so I encourage family members, community members, who are not yet covered, to be able to do that, so they can avoid any penalties when they file their taxes. I also would like to extend my congratulations publicly to TRP teacher Ms. Patty Ferrante and our board member Ms. Marie Brizuela for being honored at the Women of Daly City event that happened earlier this month. It's always great to see representatives, both from our board as well as our staff, honored at this citywide event. And also wanted to let the board know that we have had two visits from the San Mateo County School Board Association for Kent Award nominees. We have two programs that we nominated. Both of them received visits, and we should find out within a couple of weeks whether or not we will be receiving those awards. So, save May 19th on your calendar for the dinner and award ceremony.
Very good.
Okay. Now...
Did we skip persons wishing to address the board?
No, Melinda, address the board. No, that was, that was persons wishing to address the board.
So we went out of order.
We did it all out of order. I skipped us. Okay. So that does bring us to general functions and the consent agenda, and we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we need a voice vote on this one, I mean a rule call vote.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye. Okay.
I'd like to, I forgot to ask, I don't want to take the star off, I just want to ask superintendent a question on item three. Are our dates for our calendar, are they closer to the same as the high school district this time?
Not quite, because they do start toward the beginning of August, and so we don't start quite that early, but our vacation periods, I think, are closer.
That's what I mean, those things, 'cause it always means we might have...
Right now, it's just the starting and ending of the school year, but as we look at the other vacation periods, we try to align them similarly.
Oh, so you haven't approved everything, then?
No. This is just the beginning. Day and the last day.
Okay. So keeping in mind, 'cause sometimes when they're not the same, we lose attendance.
We've been doing pretty well at keeping them matched.
Not really. Some have not been.
Okay, so that brings us to item four, the TR Polisita Middle School Educational Specifications for New Construction. Would you like to...
Sure, I can just provide a little background on this. So, at the last meeting, you received a presentation from Mr. Wally Gordon, from Dean Louis McKinley, and he presented the big general concept of what's gonna be happening at TR Polisita. So these educational specifications are just part of that, of that sort of, in words, what he was talking about, and they will accompany the plans that need to be submitted to the state architect for approval.
Are there any questions from the board regarding that item?
Looks good.
It's very exciting. Okay, so...
Make a motion? Okay, I want to make a motion. We have no discussion, right? Okay.
We appear to have no discussion. Wait just one moment for Mr. Otidy to...
When the architects are here, that's when we ask the questions.
He has untangled himself from traffic.
Thank you, everyone. Apologize.
Okay.
Okay, ready? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the educational specifications for Thomas Polisita Middle School as required by the California Department of Education.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, unanimously approved. One more step on the way to having that cool school for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll take this one.
Section two, curriculum and instruction. Item one, acceptance of donations.
I'm ready.
I'll let Mr. Ali cover that one, since you're still getting settled.
All right, so we would like to thank Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign and Carolyn Wong, Mr. Mark Argarin, Ms. Deanne Duty Sangrau, Mr. Alter Sand, and Mrs. Michelle Luong, and also Steve Fram of Caring Inc. for all their donations of either money or other in kind supplies.
I would like to wholeheartedly second that.
Okay, and we accept those donations. That's part of that motion.
We would like to accept these.
Okay, so we do have the motion, and a second from Mr. Otidy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that is unanimous. Okay. I believe we have Mr. Valenti here to speak to us about the TR Polisita single plan for student achievement?
Thank you all.
Give us the highlights.
I know. I think I'll be as quick as that public comment earlier. Thank you all for having me today. I'm just here to go over some of the highlights for our school plan for student success this year, our SIPSA plan, Student Achievement. So I just wanted to go over the main areas, and then go over some subpoints, and open it up to any questions you might have for me that I can answer. The main areas I'm gonna start out with are going over our signature practices that we've been rolling out this year, focusing on how we're implementing our TRP leadership team, as well as implementation of the Common Core instructional practices. Then I'll move on to mathematics, what's been going on in that, reading language arts, English language development, and then conclude with family involvement. All right? So I'm gonna start with some of the practices we've been really focusing on, which is building the capacity of our leadership team to not only run the staff, department, and grade level meetings, but to get more input and build the capacity of the individual departments to give input and implement some of the changes that the alternative government team's been working with us on, as well as kind of, as well as improving the collaboration that's going on within the departments, as well across the grade level. Currently, the big focus is on how do we get our weekly meeting structures in place? That's been kind of a real hard thing over the last few years to get down, so we've really tightened it up. We've worked with Marco Chavez, our community liaison, to have a TRP, or a leadership team retreat. So our structures are where we have one monthly staff meeting, which is sort of Brent's meeting. The department meetings where we really focus on shared practices and the data, interpreting the data, and then grade level meetings where we share information on kids. The department meetings are run by the department reps. That's, again, trying to delegate more autonomy across the school. The grade level meetings are run by the instructional leadership team, so that, again, brings in more of that leadership that's being rolled out on those meetings and bring more autonomy in that regard. And the Polisita leadership team will meet, we meet every Wednesday after the different meetings to get going on what we're gonna have at the next meeting. Whereas before, I put out an agenda, put it in their mailbox, and that was it, trying to have more of a give-and-take approach. And also, a big part of this has been that peers at the, at the school, teachers have agreed to have other teachers within their departments come in, give specific feedback on areas that they're asking for feedback on. These areas are selected instructional strategies that we've been working with the alternative governance team on, as well as district and site initiatives to roll out Common Core practices. As far as our progress with the implementation of Common Core instructional strategies, a big part of this part of things is really messaging that the Common Core strategies or shifts in practices, it's not necessarily a new curriculum. So there's a lot of discussion about when the new books are coming, or things of that nature. So that messaging and that clarification. We're continuing to receive district professional development and how to use the current curriculum to implement these key instructional shifts that are not only required by the Common Core, but it's required, how are we gonna get the students the practices in the classrooms to be successful on the Common Core test, the Smarter Balance test, which will be field-tested very soon, as I know you know. And to monitor this, we have regular administrative, alternative governance team, and teacher walkthroughs to observe the Common Core instructional practices being implemented. We're seeing many of the things teachers are receiving, both in their math and language arts, professional development, being rolled right into the classroom. We just had a walkthrough, I believe it was on Friday, and we're really seeing an increase across the board, and more rigorous instruction as to implementing these strategies. And a big focus, again, is on how do we promote a classroom culture where students are gonna have the daily experiences of being challenged, having to articulate what it is, is being asked of them both by their teacher, but also by their peers, and giving those students the, if you will, the academic language to have those conversations, and, and struggle with it. I'm not gonna get my productive struggle language out quite yet, but really struggle with it. And it's hard for teachers, 'cause teachers want to support and give the answer, but it's hard to hold back. So, you pardon me, I move a lot. So it's both interesting seeing how the kids are responding to it, and how teachers are changing their practices, so it's good. In math, all our sixth through eighth math teachers are receiving Common Core training. Three of our six math teachers are involved in the MELD math, English language development, professional development, and that's been going on for quite some time. In eighth grade, we've had a full rollout of the transition into the Common Core approach, where there's more heterogeneous classes, kids that are in the support classes, whereas before, it used to be you'd have back-to-back classes. So a student now might have first period math, but eighth period support. So it's broken up, give a lot more latitude in terms of who can be placed with who, and it also, you can really break up what before was just these lock sections of kids moving through the day together. And it's, we've, today we went over the day, and the day is really respond, the kids are really responding well, particularly in eighth grade. Some of the main instructional practices that are really being rolled out and are being observed in the classroom are how teachers and peers are developing their questioning And I mentioned how there's a push to have more wait time in the classroom, and give students those opportunities to, like I mentioned, to struggle with the work and find themselves, you know, looking for the resources, going to their neighbor. So there's more of that, and the teacher's doing more of the facilitation role, and you're seeing a lot of that going on. Students are asking more clarifying questions, and being taught how to ask those questions. Partner talk is more well-practiced, you see that going on, and students are able to choose from a variety of, you may hear this word a lot, sentence frames and resources in the classroom to help provide them with the support to have these academic conversations in class. In reading and language arts, the main Common Core practices that we're seeing are that students are having, or teachers are providing more activities requiring students to cite text-dependent evidence in their responses to questions, so they're going in, having to find exactly where on the page, perhaps in the text, from the, whether it be in the basal read or other resources, and then refer to those in the answers. So they're having to go interact with the text. There's a lot more think, write, pair, share activities. Teachers are using whiteboards a lot more in their classrooms to get immediate feedback on what students are understanding and not understanding, and there's a lot more attention being paid to the different language levels and academic levels that are being supported in the classroom. And you're seeing that across, it's not just reading, language arts, and math, it's social studies, it's science, it's really across the board. In English language development, how we have it at our school is we have a thirty-minute, thirty-minute ELD block within the language arts block. We have a two-period language arts block, so one of those classes has a thirty-minute ELD component. The seventh and eighth grade ELD teachers are working with the sixth grade ELD teacher who's got more training and has a little more experience, and they're sharing strategies to provide explicit oral and written instructions for the students within that thirty-minute block, how to provide specific language EL students need in order to access the content and express their understanding of what they're, they're being taught. And this year, we, for the first time, have newcomer students in mainstream math classes. It's very important, I think, that the students have access to a content knowledgeable teacher in mathematics in particular, considering all the challenges. It has been difficult because of those language issues, but we've been able to find places in the schedule for those students to get in there, and particularly in eighth grade, because of all that I think the Common Core training to work with such an array of students, the students are really just, just really doing fantastic. I'm real pleased with that. And I'm just really thankful that the staff has been open to that, 'cause it's challenging to them much more than it is to me. Let's see. And as far as family involvement, this is always a challenge, I think, at a middle school in particular. We don't have a PTSA, haven't had one since I've arrived. It was out, I think, two or three years before I even got there. But we have had an active family resource group. We have monthly meetings on the third Thursday of the month. We try to tie as many of those to student activities to bring in families to watch their kids, whether it be in the band, whether it be in the art show, and as Ms. Dart mentioned about this week, we have, or tomorrow this week, we have a PE hosted event about healthy eating for student success. So we're trying to expand those type of activities for the kids, and we have been, I've been talking with other community members and folks about how do we, we improve and options we have for our athletic program, whether it be through the school, and maybe working with the community on that, too. Other things we do to promote family involvement, of course, I have my quarterly school site council and ELAC meetings. What we do during open house, fortunately JFK and SBA have open house the same day we do, at least it was in the past, I gotta check the calendar, but we have an open house for the incoming families that same night, so I meet with them with the vice principal, do a little song and dance, and then they come on down and integrate with the rest of the kids. So it's a good opportunity for me to meet the families while they're still there in their elementary schools. I also have an orientation in August with, for all the families to come in, so we have a few opportunities there. And then, of course, I have my, this is now four years on, we have working in collaboration with the Jefferson High School District. We have an ESL program three days a week, from 8:30 to 10:30 in the morning, and it's got about twenty students that come, it's family members, and that's, we've got the same teacher, Mr. Nguyen, it's just been fantastic. So it's a good way to reach out as a, as a group. You all know our fancy dance performance is coming up in a few weeks, they'll get those invitations out, and we also have a peer mediation event, and that's where actually our kids go out into the community. They do, we work with the senior home around the corner, do some cleanup in the neighborhood, so it's more about going into the community. Maybe we can pull them back in next time. And finally, as far as getting family involvement, we have some families involved planning with our Washington DC trip. This is our fourth year in a row that we're going to Washington DC. So, those are just the main highlights of the SIPSA, and if there's any questions, I can answer.
I want to thank you for your dedication to the kids, the district, and to the community around you. We always send our special forces and our best to these communities, and I think you're doing a great job. If, if there's anything that we can do to help, let us know. But thank you very much, Brett.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to say you're doing a great job. He knows, I keep telling him that. And I've been able to enjoy many of the things that you've invited the parents to go to, and they are excited about that, keep it up. It's, it's really important that we get our parents really involved, and you're, you guys are doing it, so...
Thank you very much. No questions. That's it, everybody? All right. Thank you very much.
That was, that was a nice report. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
At that point, then, we do need to actually take action to accept that single plan before we move on.
Now I make a motion to accept the single plan for student achievement for TR Polisita School.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That's unanimous. And that brings us to our next presentation, an update on the Common Core State Standard Professional Development. And I see we have our line team here of Jessica Pace and Sandy McCulley to update us.
Getting our PowerPoint up for you.
Until we get the, the technology.
I turned it off.
Oh. Went on.
It's a different screen over here, too.
It was just there.
It was just there.
I know, and you didn't want it, you had it.
Yeah, we had it a minute ago.
This is the Smarter Balance test?
Yay, there it is.
I think this segues right into our technology upgrades.
Good evening. So you just heard some of the professional development that Mr. Valenti shared at the TRP, and then you've been hearing in the last couple meetings, people commenting on the positive impact of professional development, so we really wanted to share with you tonight some highlights of the professional development, and Jessica Pace is here with me, she's our program director for English Language Arts. Debbie Borda is our math program director, and Benjamin Mosier is our English Language Development Program Director. We're gonna focus on math and English Language Arts tonight. Debbie Borda would love to be here, but she's in the, full into scoring Mars exams, and so her team is unable to make it, but we do have our English Language Arts, some of our English Language Arts team coaches here, as you know, Melinda Dart and Barbara Swanick. So what we're gonna do is kind of just highlight some of the main focus areas, and Jessica's, Ms. Pace is going to share English Language Arts, and I'll share math.
Great, fantastic. So to begin with, I just want to formally thank our amazing coaches. We have two of them with us today. We have Melinda Dart, Barb... We have Melinda Dart, Barbara Zawonic. We also have Rachel Pageant, Becca Sherman, Chris Mappa, and Chris Aquisti. And without our amazing coaches, our professional development sessions would nowhere be at the level of where they are. So we truly thank them and their hard work for all of the work they've done this year. Let's see, is this the button I put? Okay, thanks.
Oh, it's not turned on. Wow! Batting a thousand today.
So as we're thinking about transitioning to Common Core, we just feel so fortunate that we've been able to spend these last two years getting ourselves and our teachers and our students ready for the Common Core standards. And so as we open up our PD sessions, we sort of like to not get overwhelmed by how much work there is to do and start thinking about the purposeful and focused work that we are doing. So instead of thinking of the Common Core as this idea of a light switch that suddenly we're doing it all, we like to think of it more as this dimmer switch where we're all working together slowly and purposefully to get to our goal. So, thanks. As we're thinking about the Common Core standards, we've been so fortunate to spend these last two years beginning to dive into some of the essential standards. Across all content areas, preschool through eighth grade, we focused on Common Core standards, speaking and listening. We began focusing on this standard just to start to get more student talk happening in our classrooms. And from there, the academic conversations have just really begun to grow. It's very exciting. And these strategies are happening across content areas, science, social studies, out at PE. All of our folks are really focused on getting our students to have more academic conversations and to begin to really start sharing their thinking. The second area that we've been focused on across content areas is the idea that Brent was talking about in his single plan, which is citing evidence. Whether we're citing evidence from a book that we're reading, or we're citing our evidence and explaining it in a mathematical problem, we are working with students to be going back into text and then taking the evidence that they are citing and incorporate that into their writing. And something that is excited about the Common Core when we think about the writing standards is this idea that there are three main genres of writing that we're focused on now. Instead of a laundry list of all different styles of writing where students are not always sure what are the elements of that writing, with Common Core, it's very specific. We're focused on narrative writing, we're focused on informational writing, and then a new one, which is opinion argument, where students are then taking evidence from text, taking ideas from books, and citing that evidence as they work through an argument. So we have been focused in these areas, and we're very excited about the work that's happening at our professional development sessions. Our goals for English Language Arts have really been to get structured student talk happening in our classrooms. And then we decided that text-dependent questions was too long, so we've switched it to text-talk time. We want to make sure we have students talking about what they are reading and really being able to verbalize and articulate their thinking so that then they can take what they're saying and put it into their writing. So this big instructional shift of taking evidence from the text and incorporating it into their writing has been our focus. Some evidence that I'm excited to share with you, in my site visits across the district, we are seeing students use, for example, the Show Me the Evidence bookmark, where they have academic language that is supporting this idea of citing evidence. Students use these frames so that they can practice using the language, and over time, we hope they'll begin to start to internalize this language, and then ideally, it will begin to appear into their writing. Another piece of evidence we have, this was in a second-grade class, students, in this class I was able to observe, they were using the quote or the sentence frame on page 72, it states, and then they were referring to a direct quote from the text. And to hear second graders use this kind of language is really exciting. And some of them were looking up at the board and needing to use the frame, and others of them had it, and it was part of who they were now. They were citing evidence, and that language is part of who they are. So it's very exciting to see that happening. Some other frames that we have, in addition to citing evidence, we're really trying to build discourse among our students. And so we want students to have the academic language to be able to agree and disagree with someone or build upon an idea. And so across classrooms, I am seeing it take fire where kids are having proper language to say, "I agree with your thinking," or "I disagree with your thinking, and here's my reason why." And it's nice to see that. And across our district, we are using a tool called Discussion Cards. It's part of our Constructing Meaning Professional Development that we've had. And these cards are, again, just another resource for students to use. Many students are using the Citing Evidence card, they're asking clarifying questions, they're building on a classmate's idea, and they're beginning to synthesize ideas and share their own personal thinking. So lots of conversations happening within our classrooms, and it's very exciting.
Who developed those cards?
They are from Constructing Meaning, which is an EL achieve program. And our fifth through eighth grade teachers in the district have had professional development, and it's caught on, so we are actually incorporating the idea of the Discussion Cards all the way down into our first-grade professional developments.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
So in mathematics, some of the highlights of our goals this year is to really just deepen the understanding of the new Common Core State Standards through number routines and those Mars tasks. And then also to shift from teaching for answer-getting to teaching for mathematical understanding. And so some of the, Diane Breier from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics has said that there's some high-leverage actions to implement the Common Core State Standards in mathematics, and that these actions are research-informed actions that produce the greatest benefits for your efforts. And some of those actions include what I just said, teaching for understanding and not just answer-getting, but also to develop those, students proficiency in the standard for mathematical practices. I know Ms. Borda shared those with you before. There's eight practices, includes making sense of problems, persevering and solving them, justifying, critiquing the reasoning of others, justifying, constructing viable argument, and modeling with mathematics, just a few to name. And then also incorporating high cognitive demand tasks into the teacher's instruction. And then a big part of Common Core is working in collaborative teams, having teachers work together to plan. And so what we're going to do is we want to show you a little video, and I'm going to let Jessica introduce this while I set up.
I thought we had to do an assignment.
Perfect. So one thing that we've really enjoyed highlighting in our professional developments, both math and English Language Arts, is we have videoed our own Jefferson Elementary School District teachers doing the practices and the instructional shifts that we want to replicate across the district. So this is Liz O'Neil. She is a first-grade teacher at Tobias School, and she is going to be showing you a number talk, one of the mathematical strategies that we have been working on across the district with our teachers. And as you watch this video, in addition to the number talk, some of the things that Mr. Valente referred to, you'll see students having think time and then working in pairs together, and then the teacher bringing them back to the whole class, which is called a Think-Pair-Share. You'll see kids using the four Ls, so they'll look at each other, they'll lean in, they'll lower their voices, and they will listen to each other. And lots of questioning from the teacher for students to share orally their thinking. And here is the number talk.
All right, so we are going to be doing a number talk, and we're going to be using our base 10, our 10-frame, again, our 10-frame. And who can remind me, why do we call a 10-frame a 10-frame?
Good question.
Kaylauny? There's 10 blocks or 10 squares? 10 squares, very good. And when you see that frame with 10 squares, do you even have to count the squares, or do you just know there's 10 already?
13.
Absolutely. Okay. Give me a private thumbs up when you have a number in your head, private thumbs up. Are you ready? Our question will be...
What number did you see? I saw the number 10. How did you see it?
And here again, saw or I counted 10. Either way is okay. Get to our partner, let's remind ourselves real quick of our four Ls, and here we go. One, look at your partner, lean toward your partner. How were your eyes? Listen attentively. Okay, tap your shoulder, partner. For the person with the shortest hair, ask the questions first.
What number did you see?
I saw 10 on top, 10 in the middle, and 3 on the bottom.
I don't saw 23 dots. 10 on the top, 10 in the middle, and 3 on the bottom.
I heard some really great thinking going on over here, and I was very pleased with every partner group. You were all doing exactly what I asked you to do. But what I want to do is get some different ideas so that we can hear different ways that we came up with our number. What number did you see? Okay. Okay, so I saw the number. Beautiful. And how did you see it? I'm going to count by twos. Two.
4, 2, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13.
All right, Kaylauny, now here's the tough part, because we have a lot of twos there. You need to give me a number model to match that. Oh, let's have Kaylauny do it, this is her turn. Okay, hang on a second, you know what, I'm going to lose track. You know what we're going to do here? We're going to do a little Help Us Out. We're going to count how many twos we have, how many partners we have, so that we can keep track here, or else I'm going to totally lose track, because my brain cannot keep track of all that. Let's count how many partner groups we have. One, two, three. Okay, now let's count and double-check to make sure we agree with this.
2, 4, 6, 8, 10.
What number did you see?
I saw 23 dots.
Oops, I saw the number.
I saw the number 23.
Okay. And how did you see it?
I saw 10 on the top, and 10 in the middle, and 3 on the bottom.
Okay, and remember how you told me that. How did you describe that for me? When you saw this 10 on the top, what did you call that?
2 10s and 3 1s.
Oh, so you saw 2 10s and 3 1s. Okay, 2 10s and 3 1s. Can you make a number model for me? What would we say for 2 10s? What would we call that? What number would we say?
20.
20?
1, 3, equals 23.
What number did you see?
I saw the number 23.
How did you see 23?
I saw 10 on the top, 10 in the middle, and 3 on the bottom.
Okay, so you saw 10 on the top, 10 in the middle, and 3 on the bottom. 10 on top, and 10 in middle, and, spell that right, yes, and 3 on bottom. Give me a number model, please.
10 plus 10 plus 3 equals 23.
Okay, let's double-check on that. 10, 20, 23. 23, okay. Catherine, do you still see 40, or do you, what number do you see now, Catherine?
I see the number 23.
Okay, so you're good, you see 23 now, you're good? All right. If Catherine's good, it's all good.
So again, thank you to Liz Wolf, who let us video, sorry, Liz O'Neil, who let us video her. We're so happy to be able to see the mathematical practices right in action with our own Tobias students. It's been fantastic. And we have many teachers across the district who have been kind enough to let us into their classrooms and video them and their practice, as well as our students allowing us to video them so that we can pick up on the conversations that they're having. It's just been a wonderful tool for us at the professional development to have these And with our teachers, after we show the videos, we always have a lens that we've watched the video in, and then we practice some structured student talk so that we have conversations surrounding the kinds of things that they noticed in terms of instructional practices, what were the students doing, and then some real discussions about how might they be able to replicate these practices within their own classrooms. And our next steps, thinking about our professional development for next year, we're very excited as we roll into Common Core. We are going to continue in ELA, keeping our focus of structured student talk, citing evidence, and linking that to our writing. But we are going to be moving those strategies and thinking about how we're using our existing textbooks, and we're going to be developing what we're calling some bridge lessons, which will be taking our existing story selections and writing Common Core lessons so that teachers will be able to use the materials in their classroom until we make a new adoption, but will be able to be using Common Core strategies and standards in their teaching. We have been working with folks in Washington DC on the Council of the Great City Schools, and they have worked with teachers across the United States. One of our partner teachers was actually from the state of Hawaii, as we're working with looking at writing these lessons. And so it's a national project to think about how our district's going to bridge the materials that they have now to what materials we will be needing as we really transition to Common Core. And so providing support for teachers next year as we make that transition is one of our high priorities for professional development in ELA.
So in math, as you know, we received a grant through the Silicon Valley Community Foundation in joint effort with the high school district and their feeder districts. And so we are actually going to be having summer professional development to help build transition units to prepare our students and staff for the Common Core in math. We've actually piloted this transition unit in our eighth grade this year, and seeing the scores from our interim assessments, they, it has really been phenomenal how well students have been doing with this new Common Core in math in eighth grade. And just last week, the high school district approved the International Pathway or Integrated Pathway, and so they will be starting with the Common Core math next year, which our students are now ready for with the eighth-grade math. And so what we're going to have is three days in the summer for teachers pre-K to eighth grade, as well as high school will be joining us, and they're going to be building these transition units with our current curriculum, using formative assessments, Mars tasks, and really focusing on the instructional practices, the eight mathematical practices. And then throughout the year, we'll also have release time. We're going to have two in-service days this year in October and January. Last year we only had, or this past year we only had one, so now we'll have two, and it will be focused on math for our math teachers, and then our content-specific teachers in the middle school will have their professional development on those days as well. So, are there any questions?
Well, I enjoyed watching the video, seeing the children really engaged, and it looks like it's really doing well. We're starting in the first grade and going all the way up, it's going to be great. Thank you. Thanks for sharing it.
I didn't have any questions, but I just wanted to notice that the students that won science awards, I could hear the structured student talk when they're presenting here, so doing a good job there, too.
Wonderful, thank you. I couldn't help but reflect that those, particularly the text-based question frames and things, I could have used those when I was teaching freshman composition at the university, because that was really what we were trying to teach them in freshman English, and here we're working on, it's got to make an improvement. It has to, if the kids are learning that, that way of looking at texts from the beginning.
I'd just like to echo on that, can you go to the card slide right after the sentence frames?
This one?
Yeah, yeah, so here's what, this is really what caught me. I'm actually quite impressed of what the kids are learning today, because I remember this from my English honors class in the, at the university, that they're, that they're learning this now. It was something similar to this, was a book called They Say, I Say by Gerald Graff. And he was actually part, one of the guys that are part of that MLA and created that whole, that whole structure. So yes, this is how we did upper-division expository writing. So if I had something like this at that time, I'm very impressed, thank you very much.
And our frames are leveled, their shapes on them... And our frames are leveled, there are shapes on them, so the circles are a lower level, you know, language to use, the triangles are intermediate, and your stars are your most advanced and more sophisticated language, and so the frames are tiered to be able to have an entry point for all of our students, and our goal is to get all of them to feel comfortably deflects through all three of those levels.
That's a good illumination, thanks.
So one of the things I just wanted to highlight, and Ms. McCulick, you can verify this, but the video that we saw from Ms. O'Neill's classroom, that is on a website now for national training models, is that correct?
Yes, inside mathematics.
Yeah, so they've, not just Ms. O'Neill, there are other teachers in our district who are taking these practices on and implementing them, that they're now becoming model of instruction across the nation for folks who access those websites. So we're pleased with that and happy that we get to be leaders in yet another place.
That actually is a question that I had, was that her method that she came up with to teach that? No? That was, where'd she learn that, from the training?
Through the professional development.
Through the professional development, yes.
All right.
And I think it's really good that we're gonna do that much development with the teachers, because this way they're all gonna be doing it the same way, which is great. And I think that was, isn't that the focus of Common Core? That no matter where you are, you're all gonna be learning basically the same way.
Well, actually, I think, isn't it more, you're gonna be learning the same thing?
Well, yeah.
Because the Common Core does not designate a methodology, really.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not. Well, instructional practices, it's to really just deeper understanding.
Right.
Yeah. But so that they can move from school to school and be on the same page.
Right.
And that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Jesus Christ. Okay, yes, so the next item, while you're passing that out, is item for the Common Core Technology Implementation Plan. It says it's an action item, but we will only be getting information tonight.
Yeah, yeah, it has, we reviewed the regulations, it must be approved at a different meeting than you hear about it, so.
Okay, so we will approve it at the next meeting, and we will pay attention tonight.
So more Common Core. This time it's about the technology of the Common Core. The Common